Quality-based education. There are factors that can increase or decrease QBE earnings. One of the main factors is increase or decrease in full-time equivalent, FTE. FTE refers to data collected for quality-based education funding and is based on student enrollment and education services provided by the local school. If enrollment decreases, so does QBE funding. A second factor that affects QBE earnings is local fair share or local five mil. This is the amount of funds each school district is required to contribute each fiscal year to participate in QBE. The state automatically deducts the district's five mil, five dollars per one thousand of the six tax dollars. Another factor that has an negative impact on QBE earnings is austerity reduction. Austerity reductions are methods used by the state to balance the budget. For the district, this means a reduction in funds. Last year, we had over one million in austerity reduction, and currently, we have one point three million in austerity reduction of the current fiscal year twenty-two budget, and one point three million in austerity reduction is anticipated for next fiscal year twenty, twenty-three. And this slide shows the local revenue from fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year twenty-two. Fiscal year nineteen and twenty are actual expenditures, and they have been audited. Fiscal year twenty-one is un-audited. Its actual expenditures have, however, they have not been audited, meaning that the auditors could make minor modifications. And in fiscal year twenty-two, it's the current budget. Highlighted in yellow is the military rate for each fiscal year. Below the highlighted military rate is the property digest base, and the growth shows the increase from year to year. So the property digest base is the amount that we receive. The tax assesses value of property in the state school. From fiscal year to fiscal ye-, from fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year twenty, there was a large growth of approximately fifteen percent. From fiscal year twenty to twenty-one, there was a growth of seven percent. And from last year to the current year, there was a growth right under five percent. However, with the zero point seven five increase in military rate, the district is anticipating on collecting an additional one point sixteen percent in property. This slide shows that the property value in the city of Decatur has increased for the last four years, which has resulted in increased revenue. Other local revenue for fiscal year nineteen to twenty, twenty-two. Other local revenue has been negatively impacted by COVID pandemic. Earnings for investments have drastically decreased. The earnings is basically interest from bonds, and as shown on the slide, in two thousand and nineteen, the earnings reached a little under two hundred and seventy-five thousand. That was a thirty-three percent decrease in fiscal year twenty, and a ninety-five decrease from fiscal year twenty to twenty-one. We dropped from earning one hundred and eighty-one thousand to right under ten thousand. We are still experiencing a decrease in earnings from investment and have budgeted ten thousand for the current year. No, I'm sorry. You're good. Thank you for being considerate. Even though I was planning to sit down and clip. Tuition charges include tuition for all tuition-paying students, including those that live out of the district and those paying for early childcare. Prior to the pandemic, the district averaged a little over two point six million in tuition charges. Due to the closure of the facility for early childhood, tuition dropped thirty-three percent from fiscal year twenty to fiscal year twenty-one. We currently have increased enrollment for early childhood classes and expect tuition to increase back to the normal levels for the current. Revenue from household taxes were reduced from fiscal year nineteen to twenty-one. However, we are anticipating an increase in collection in the current year due to restaurants reopened. Other local revenues increased drastically by two four, two hundred and forty-three percent due to revenue received from the state for capital outlet. However, there was a decrease of fifty-four percent due to the pandemic's impact on transportation fees, facility rental, and other revenue traditionally received from outside. State revenue, also referred to as QBE revenue, is revenue received from the state that is directly related to student enrollment and educational services provided by the district. The numbers highlighted in orange represent the amount of earned revenue. This is the amount earned of salaries, operating, categorical grants, and other miscellaneous grants prior to the deduction of austerity in the local five mil. After the deduction, the amounts in green represents the actual amount of revenue received from the state for this fiscal year. State revenue increased by nine point six nine percent from fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year twenty, but decreased by a little under three percent from fiscal year twenty to twenty-one. The decrease was due primarily to the one million austerity reduction and the increase in five mil share. As stated previously, with property tax increase, so does the district's five mil share. Revenue is anticipated to decrease in fiscal year twenty-two, also primarily due to austerity reduction and increase in five mil share. For the last two years, austerity reduction has equated to approximately one point five million, and we are anticipating a reduction of one point three million for fiscal year twenty-two. Total austerity reduction since twenty twenty is a little under three. Federal revenue are grants received from the federal government, which are awarded on a reimbursement basis and have restrictions on how the funds are to be used. Overall, the funds received by the grants have increased from fiscal year nineteen to the present budget. Highlighted in green are the CARES funds. The district spent twenty-two thousand in CARES funds in fiscal year twenty, one point two million in fiscal year twenty-one, and its budget has been a little over three point five in the current budget. Please note that fiscal year twenty-two budgets are still being awarded, and the district is anticipating additional grant funding, including an additional amount for CARES. It'll be a smaller. Yes, sir?
Is the, um, local fair share accounted for as a part of the rollback knowledge? Like, we don't have to account for that increase in the rollback knowledge categorization?
No, um, it's not. It's not. It's like a double X.
Yeah, alright.
It's the, um, numbers that are missing for vocational ed and, um, Title II for fiscal year twenty, twenty-two and down below. Why are those numbers not? The budgets are still being awarded, so each day, we are getting awards for them. Yeah, because with the federal grants, their fiscal year start. Any other questions? Okay, feel free to stop me if needed. Okay. I'm trying to turn around with far. But okay. Thank you. Okay, and do be mindful that CARES are one-time funds and are not recurring. Balances of our funds roll over for one year. So for CARES, basically, fiscal year twenty-three, CARES funds will end unless we get a new report. So this is the last year. This slide shows the average revenue earned. Local revenue, which consists primarily of property tax, is the largest revenue source at fifty-two percent. State revenue, which consists of QBE funding, is the second largest at forty percent. Federal revenue and other local revenue makes up about four percent of revenue received by the district. Okay, before we go into the historical trend on expenditures, are there any more questions on the revenue part? The district spent funds on salary and fringe benefits and other categories. Salary and fringe benefits make up the largest portion of expenditures at an average of eighty-six percent. The salaries are the total amount paid to staff members for services rendered, and the benefits are costs paid by the district for health insurance premium, which the state dictates an annual amount of eleven thousand three hundred and forty per employee. And the board supplements this amount with an additional nine hundred and forty dollars per year period. Other benefits include dental insurance, medical, Medicare, Social Security, and teachers' retirement. Teachers' retirement system increased from nineteen point oh six in twenty twenty-one to nineteen point eight one in twenty twenty-two, and will increase in fiscal year twenty-three to nineteen point nine.
Sorry, what was the last number?
As far as the increase?
Oh, yes.
I'm trying to go back. How do I go back? Okay, um, so the teachers' retirement increased from nineteen oh six in twenty twenty-one to nineteen point eighty-one this year, and then next year is going to increase basically from nineteen point eighty-one to nineteen point ninety-eight. And that's a percent. So everyone that qualifies for teachers' retirement, we have to pay that amount. It's a percent of their salary.
We don't have to cover it right now, but I'd be interested in getting kind of a historical look on what health is done.
As far as the increase in health? Okay. Salary and fringe benefits have increased at a minimum of eleven percent since two thousand and nineteen. Some of the factors that increased include staff increases and raises for each year and opening up Tally Street in twenty twenty. Additionally, in last fiscal year, the budget was increased due to significant salary scale adjustment to make the district more competitive in the metro and latter reach. Last year, prior to COVID, the government-proposed budget included a two thousand dollar raise for all teachers. Although the final state budget did not include the two thousand raise for teachers, the district gave teachers and everyone on the teacher's salary scale a two thousand dollar raise by using a portion of the district's fund balance. Fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget also reflects significant salary scale increases for paraeducators, clerk, administrative assistants, receptionists, bookkeepers, food and nutrition staff, custodian and maintenance staff, early childhood staff, bus monitors, and bus drivers. These increases were given to make us more competitive in the region and bring consistency to salary progression. For fiscal year twenty-two, there was a slight salary decrease from fiscal year twenty-one. However, do be mindful that we reallocated over one point three million in positions from general funds to CARES grant funds for one year. Additionally, there are other grant-funded positions and salaries for interventions that will also be moved to fiscal year twenty twenty. We will go over this in detail in upcoming slides regarding changes from your fiscal year twenty-two budget to your fiscal year twenty-three budget. Benefits increased in fiscal year twenty twenty, increased in from fiscal year twenty-two, twenty twenty to fiscal year twenty-one by eighteen. The numerous salary increases, including the additional two thousand for everyone on the teacher's salary scale and salary scale upgrade approved in fiscal year twenty-one, contributed to this increase. Unemployment compensation also increased by over sixty-five thousand from fiscal year twenty to twenty-one. Health insurance for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen to eleven is based on the actual number of employees that utilize the district's health insurance. We budget health insurance for all qualified employees, which is why we see an increase for fiscal year twenty-two for health insurance much larger than the previous year. Teachers' retirement benefit costs increased as the number of qualified employees increased and salaries increased, and with the rate change. These are your major expenditures. Your categories are other expenditure categories. So you have salaries, and then you have other expenditures. So these are your other expenditures and their benefits. This slide shows the annual actual spend for each of the other categories in fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year twenty-one and the budget for fiscal year twenty-two. Typically, the largest area of spend is professional services, supplies and materials, technology supplies, software and equipment, repairs and maintenance, and energy, and energy insurance facilities. From fiscal year two thousand and nineteen to twenty, there was a large decrease in equipment purchases related to the opening of Tally. Fiscal year twenty-one operational budget shifted in the spend categories in order to meet the requirements of students and staff related to the pandemic. Funds within these categories were reallocated as needed to meet the needs of the department. Any questions so far?
Is there a way to translate, again, not for today, but I'd be interested in figuring out how to map this categorization of expense with the one that gets reported out in the final budget, where you have instruction, MNO, and everything like that?
This one is by object.
Sure.
And then state requires us to report it by function.
Yep.
So that's why sometimes it's hard to compare, because you might try to compare it with another district, and they have reported it by object.
Yes. Are we able to get that translated?
Oh, yes. Yes, and actually, when the board approves it, it'd be by function. So moving forward, if you want me to provide it by object and function, it's just that object gives you more details and.
Oh, I, yeah, I recognize the value of it. I just, it's easier to do historical based on all the budgets.
By function.
Yeah, that we have to do. Thanks.
Not a problem. Um, so these are the total expenditures. You see the subtotal of other expenditures transferred to other funds. Those are funds that we transfer over to ECLC to help balance their budget. In twenty twenty-one, you see that amount increased to six thirty-six, seven one four, and that was because we had to also transfer funds to school nutrition programs.
Ah, good question. It's like, I don't know, either do or answer. Um, in terms of dues and fees, it just seems like such a large number for dues and fees. I was just wondering, like, what kind of dues and fees?
So it's not only dues and fees, but it's contracted services also.
Okay, so, okay, so the, um, the definition.
Mm-hmm.
It was separate from, like, professional services.
Right.
Um, well, see, I see a separate line matter from professional services, so, okay. Under the category, it's just dues and fees and salaries. Why is that a lot of dues and fees?
Yeah, and also professional services fees and any registration fees, and it's for the entire district, including schools also. And that's what's in there.
We also take IV or GL out of those funds. Um, also. Those are not big categories, but round of like, um, but those are two of the big ones. Two of the big costs.
Okay.
Can you please repeat what you said about the six hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and fourteen?
So transferred to other funds. So this is about the general fund, and so one of the other funds is like the ECLC. So each year, we have to transfer funds over to balance their budget because they spend more than they receive.
So that's our subsidy for the.
Exactly. Exactly, and the six thirty-six, that amount increased because, of course, as school nutrition was closed and we didn't lay off any employees, so we had to suffer.
And also because we didn't collect tuition for ECLC.
Right.
For several months. So what a more typical subsidy is reflected in the.
Right, the two hundred to the three hundred. Like, this year, we anticipate that they'll need three hundred and ninety-four. They might not need as much, but that's what we anticipate. Okay, this slide lists all expenditures in their total. Okay, that's the last slide. So this slide includes all of the expenditures. You have your subtotal for salary and benefit, your subtotal for other expenditures, your transfer to other funds, and you see at the bottom, your total of the expenditures. Okay, this slide is a visual of how funds are expended individually. The other category items make up two percent or less of the budget, and salaries and benefits, of course, make up eighty-six percent of the budget. Okay, this slide shows a breakdown of the general fund revenue and expenditures per student. The top row shows the FTE, and this FTE is based on the FTE that's on the QBE sheet. It shows the, uh, FTE for each fiscal year. Highlighted in yellow is the QBE revenue earned per student. This is the QBE earned prior to any deductions for austerity or five mil share. Highlighted in gray is the state revenue received per student. So this is the actual amount of QBE received. So you understand the difference between the yellow and the gray. Highlighted in pink is the local revenue received per student. So this is the revenue from the property tax and from tuition. Highlighted in light green is the total revenue received per student, and in dark green is the total expenditure per student. The final row shows the difference between the total revenue received and expenditure spent per student. In two thousand and nineteen, we received two hundred and two more than we spent per student. In two thousand and twenty, we received five dollars more revenue than we spent per student. In twenty twenty-one, we spent one thousand seventy-three more in expenses than we received in revenue, and in twenty twenty-two, we are anticipating on spending six hundred and thirty-four more in expenses than we received in revenue. And the number decreased for twenty twenty-two because, again, we moved funds from general funds to the. Any questions? This slide is a visual of the revenue received and expenditures spent per student. As you can see, the yellow expenditure line is increasing after the gray revenue.
It's interesting just to look at that kind of right when the pandemic hit.
Yes.
And then the revenue goes down during the pandemic. The expenditures go up during the pandemic for a lot of reasons.
Right.
But also deliberately because we added a lot of staff this year and remedial program during the summer and during the weekends, and then a lot of staff to reduce class sizes to help with student immunization. So some of that was deliberate, but I think it's really interesting to.
Yes, fiscal year twenty-two.
See when they pass, because ideally, we want to have more revenue than expenditures.
Yes.
Especially for going to be sustainable going forward, because it's interesting of the timing of when those lines cross, think about why.
And when you think about the reduction in austerity, also with the revenue, so that decreased.
Right, and also another of the factors like the senior tax exemption and how that is very, very small.
Yep, and the expenditures with us giving the raises, although the governor didn't, and, you know, digging into our fund balance for that, that had a big impact on it.
Right.
Okay, this slide is a visual of the revenues and expenditures from two thousand and nineteen to twenty twenty-two. The orange bar represents the expenditures, and the blue bar represents the revenue. Since two thousand and nineteen, the orange expenditure bar is progressively exceeding the blue revenue bar, which means the difference between the expenditures and the revenue is being deducted from the fund balance.
Good question. I, I mean, I may be stealing your thunder from coming to the twenty twenty-three budget, but presumably, that's going to start getting inverted. We're going to see more revenue than expenditures so that we're able to start replenishing the fund up.
Absolutely, yeah, going to be mandatory to the. Okay, this is a visual of the fund balance. As our expenditures continue to exceed our revenue, our fund balance is quickly increasing.
Um, I do, I was piggybacking on what Heather said. If anybody's listening and worried about it, this is precisely what you would expect to see, and I mean, the fund balance is there for something like the pandemic.
COVID.
Yeah, I mean, that's exactly, this is exactly what we wanted to do.
To add on to that, this year, we received less than four million dollars in CARES funds, the lowest this year. Other districts comparable size to them received over twenty-five million dollars. So we really received a very small portion of CARES funds compared to other districts our same size, and it's based on the percentage of students on free reading plan. Because that percentage is so small within our system, we did less federal funding, therefore less CARES funds.
Yes.
So even though we have the same probable expenses that other districts had for COVID, we had to pay more of that out of our own pockets than needing CARES funds.
And it's interesting, the government's deliberate decision that we made as the board was when, when the state budget was changed in June of twenty twenty, did not award the two thousand dollar salary increases. And we, we awarded that because we wanted to continue to close the gap in higher, more competitive salaries. We saw that as a trend, it's something that we could do, but it's also something that we could afford to do, and we wanted to pay our teachers better. And even this past year, it was also a priority of the board to give a COLA and give a staff increase to our teachers, which costs us more over the long run because it also increases cost and benefits.
Exactly.
And the retirement contributions that we give, and so it's more sustainable, more valuable to the teachers really to get a pay increase rather than just to get a one-time bonus here and there, because that doesn't fill their salary all the time, nor does it make us more competitive with others, nor does it allow them a larger contribution to their retirement over the long term. So those are decisions that the board has made, which, and we see, costs us a lot of money, eighty-six percent of our budget, but we are, we are making these decisions very deliberately while watching the fund balance and making sure that we are staying above the four percent, which is the minimum that we want to have to keep us in a little bit better.
And now, a lot of districts are giving bonuses, retention bonuses, hiring bonuses, because they did receive so much CARES funds, and unfortunately, because we received a limited amount, we're not able to offer those again.
Again, not meaning to steal your thunder with what I hear, you're getting ready to talk, but we actually are going to go below the threshold of fund balance, at least projectively.
That will be a decision that we will have to make. I would hope that we would not.
Would not, yes.
Um, I think this might be better answered by you, that's for me, but if the bulk of it were, the expenditures around the start of the pandemic were COVID-related, was, are you saying that most of that was hiring of staff, answer staff, is that what I heard? Or is it a mix of things? And if so, could you clarify? Because some of those may be.
Yeah.
We may be able to peel back over.
Right.
But maybe not.
So, I'm, I'm.
I think it was a combination, but the salary increases were the largest because the COVID hit was just a one-time hit, whereas the salaries, you know, like Hessa said, the benefits increased, and then that's recurring. So that was the biggest portion of it.
Before COVID hit, there was, before we even knew COVID was a thing, there was a decision to, the governor had to propose the budget to give everyone, the teachers, a two thousand dollar raise, pulled that back, the Gators still went ahead and gave the two thousand dollar raise to our staff, so that was a major hit to our budget. That same year, we redid our salary schedules for a lot of our classified and at-wheel employees, our bus drivers, our school nutrition workers, our custodians, and brought them at a more competitive K scale. That was another big hit to our fund balance that year. So that was two thousand nineteen, twenty, before the pandemic hit. And then it hit, we already put a big dent in our fund balance, so then we had, before we knew CARES funds were coming, we started hiring, uh, pod facilitators, additional pods to help facilitate that online learning, um, and then CARES funds came, those were allocated for, um, like, what was it, the can sanitizer, air filters, those amounts.
Type of equipment.
Just, just really quick question, in terms of, when did, when did austerity start?
Austerity was annoying for a long time.
As far as the reduction, fiscal year twenty is, um, yeah.
So that was, that's a couple million dollars a year or something.
And, oh, year after year.
And they called it something, and they would not fully fund the QBE formula before that. So there has been some kind of government pulling back from what they say they were reviewing, whether it's called an austerity cut or they were not fully funding the QBE formula.
And we got to the point where we were fully funded for, like, a year.
Then they implemented the austerity cut.
Yeah, right. Let me, I just want to make sure I fully understand that as I'm looking at this. We're seeing austerity, it's about five hundred down in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, it's another million, in twenty twenty-two, it's another one point three. So that's cumulative in the twenty twenty-two budget. We are on the order of two point seven million dollars less from the state than we would have gotten had it continued, okay? And have they, my understanding, I think, was that there will not be an austerity reduction. The governor is not recommending an austerity reduction.
It's in discussion, but we're hoping that it being an election year, that austerity will be fully restored, but a final decision has not been made.
There's no final decision will be made for some time, but it, it, the general wisdom, I, the buzz, as I understand, am I right?
Yeah, yes, that is the top of the street, but I think when we look at how budgets are being presented and finally approved in the era of COVID. Yeah, yes, that is the top of the street, but I think when we look at how budgets are being presented and finally approved in the era of COVID, we cannot anticipate a total budget from the state.
Let, let me ask what fully restored means. Does that mean the one point three that they took from last year? Or does that mean the two point seven that they've taken cumulatively?
Just this, this is the year twenty-three.
They don't take any more.
They're going to.
We don't get any back.
No, 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 I don't mean paying back, but I mean, the, the QBE would be the two point seven million dollars higher that they had taken in previous years.
It would be the one point three million.
Closer to three million, okay, that's what I meant, okay. Yeah, I get that. I remember the wrong, the answer to your question.
Ready? So this is a visual of the fund balance based on percentage of expenditure. The board policy sets about the minimum fund balance of four percent. We are quickly approaching that. Okay, next, we will look at the first phase of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three preliminary budget. Please be mindful that this budget is preliminary and there are a lot of decisions that the governor will make that will have an impact on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Lani, are you, and I just want to let the board know and everyone that's listening, so what we've got Lani to do is, there are zero changes in the budget. If we just take everything we have on our expenditure side and look at what we're projecting our revenues for, for next year, and put those together, this is what our budget will look like. So no changes in expenditures, but anticipating some increase in revenue. So that's this first slide. And then we go into anticipating step and COLA. So then she's going to share what those, so this is this year's budget. But then for FY twenty-three, she's going to show you what it would look like if we made zero changes on expenditures and anticipated increased revenue. And then she's going to show you, hey, if we say we want to go ahead and give a COLA and a STEP, that's kind of the minimum, here's what our budget will look like.
And is this taking into account, for example, the, the change that we now know is happening with the senior tax exemption?
Yes.
Okay, but it's also assuming that the austerity reduction will continue to get.
Correct.
That is true.
Okay.
So this is your current fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget, which has been increased by approximately two hundred and eighty-eight thousand due to the addition of standard substitutes, which include one four-time substitute for ECLC, Lord, upper elementary students, and two four-time substitutes for middle and high. The current budget requires an additional three point nine million to be deducted from the fund balance of ten. So at the bottom, you see the three point nine. This reduces the fund balance to six point one million, which is within the four to fifteen percent range required by board policy. Last year during budget discussion, in order to reduce expenses for general funds, multiple physicians and intervention services were reallocated to care funds of the current fiscal year twenty twenty-two. This slide shows the list of expenditures that were reallocated to care funds for fiscal year twenty-two, with the understanding that these funds need to be reallocated back to general funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. There's a total of three point four million in expenses that will need to be reallocated to general funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. This slide displays the current fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-two budget and changes that will impact the fiscal year twenty-three budget. For revenue, we anticipate an eight percent growth in the budget at the current military rate of twenty-one. This will increase local tax revenue by approximately three point one. We anticipate a decrease of seventeen thousand in tuition due to this being the last year of free tuition can suit. The amount earned for QBE is expected to increase by a little under three hundred thirty-two thousand. However, with the increase in proxy tax, the amount deducted for local fast share will increase by a little under eighty. We also anticipate a decrease in enrollment of one hundred and forty-three. Since enrollment is one of the factors that can decrease QBE funding, we anticipate a decrease in funding of seven hundred seventy, seven hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred and forty-eight. This equates the amount, this, this equates to the amount of revenue received per student for fiscal year twenty-one, which is five thousand four hundred and thirty-seven. Additionally, we anticipate a small increase of seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty-five a grant. This brings the overall, overall increase in revenue to approximately two point two million. Any questions on the revenue? Okay. For expenditures, we must add back in salaries and benefits from CARE, TRS increase, and increases in intervention services currently allocated to CARE for professional services and supplies. We are reallocating three hundred and fifty-nine thousand in tax lift to supply fund. This brings a total increase in expenditures to approximately three point one million. For fiscal year twenty-three, we anticipate on using approximately four point six million of the six point one million fund balance as shown in blue. This reduces the end of fund balance to one point five million and the fund balance percentage to one point eight percent, which is below the four percent minimum fund balance percentage specified in board policy. So this slide is the preliminary fiscal year twenty twenty-three starting budget. I have a pretty picture.
They never are.
If we give a two percent cost of living adjustment in stepping. Decrease the fiscal year twenty-three expenses by approximately two point four million, which will completely exhaust the fund balance and leave us in the negative by a little over one million. The end of fund balance percentage will be negative one point two percent. This slide shows revenues and expenditures from fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Again, you see that expenditures are increasing more than revenue. This slide is a visual of the fund balance percentage, which. In this presentation.
Like we tee me up really well when you. I'm going to sit back to you. Okay, so as Lani has shared, we've got some difficult decisions to make and some things to prioritize as we move forward. But I also want to make sure as we plan, we're not just planning for next year, what we're planning for five, ten years out, because that's the way we're going to make financial decisions that keep our district in a good financial state going forward. So just to give you a historical perspective, this has been our student enrollment over the past five years. So we have seen that we slightly increased over time. This is just K-12 enrollment. But we did have the decrease based on COVID for this year, which we were anticipating. And that's a decrease in enrollment that has been seen nationwide in K-12 schools. This is our five-year projected enrollment. I did update these because we did get the Cooperative Strategies report. Just over Thanksgiving break, I went ahead and updated these numbers for the board so that you could see what these updated numbers would look like based on their projections. Now, I will also share, as I mentioned, when I shared the report with the board, Cooperative Strategies, who's just this report for us, has several models that they use to project enrollment for us. This is their recommended enrollment projection. There is a decrease in live birth rates, not just in Decatur, but across the nation, and that's what's driving a decrease in enrollment, not just in our school system, but in school systems around the nation. They have also some alternative enrollment projections for us that hold our kindergarten and first grade classes at a steady rate. They say we're going to anticipate it stays at like three hundred and forty-five. They're not recommending that because they do not think that's what we're, we're going to see in our enrollment. We know that Decatur is kind of an oddball district where when people move out, people with young children typically move into those homes. So, but I do want to make sure that we are preparing for what we could see, not what we may see. So basically saying, I don't want to anticipate we're going to receive three hundred more students than we do and then have to find and scramble for where those funds would come from to pay if we don't receive those students. So we do see that we are, they are projecting some drop in enrollment over time. And then I did break this down by grade band, so we can see that we are seeing our class sizes decrease first at the K-two level. We're going to see those numbers get smaller over time. Then we're also going to see them get smaller over time at three-five. It happens slower at middle school and high school, we'll see those numbers decrease over time because we have several large grade levels that are matriculating up through our system. I also wanted to share with the board, you've seen the presentation that Lani gave, that about eighty-six percent of our budget is spent on salaries. And these are the salaries that make up that eighty-six percent. So about fifty-eight percent of our, that eighty-six percent of our budget is paying directly to classroom teachers. And then pair of pros is another eight percent. So we do pay a significant amount of our fund balance, of our salaries and benefits to classroom teachers and other staff that are in the classroom, serving our students. I also wanted to break it down by a per people allotment. So what I did was looked at our overall fund balance, or not fund balance, overall general fund, and then took that and created a ratio so we can see how much we're, how much, what our allotment is per student with different staff categories. So you can see, we've been decreasing our class size over time, which translates to increased expenditures, decreased revenue. So that's where you're going to see that. And then you'll see this year, we do have that increase that up based on, you'll see that on every one of these slides, and that is we took those funds, care funds to pay some of our salary.
Can I, really quickly again, explain to me what that rate, what is the numerator and denominator in that ratio?
So it's per people, so per one student, we have six point, six point six students per each staff member.
Got it, okay.
Salary per student.
So this is student to staff.
Student to staff, we got it. Yeah, but this is for every single employee in our district. This is classroom teacher. So this is only looking at our student to teacher ratio for classroom teachers.
Is that consistent? Well, no, that's a dumb question. I'll retract it. What would be interesting is to know what this looks like across the different schools.
It ranges a lot.
Yeah.
From in our schools or districts across the special area.
For ours.
For ours, yeah. This is our student to teacher ratio, or student to staff ratio for just certified staff. Those are staff that have a certification through the state. These are our classified staff, student to staff ratios over time. You can kind of see just the same trend. I also did want to provide general administration, and this general administration is principals, assistant principals, instructional coaches, and coordinators and hire at the district office. So you can see, we have kind of, we did have an increase, dropped way down, and then have a little, a bit of an uptick this past year. The other thing I did want to share with the district is.
I want to make sure I understand it, but you can go back and look at that. So you're saying that there are a hundred and, in fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, there are a hundred and thirteen students per administration person.
General administration.
And then now twenty-one, twenty-two, there's a hundred. So the larger that number is, the more efficient we are.
That's one way to look at it.
Yeah, so we, what we did is we have between fiscal year eighteen and nineteen, we actually staffed up a fair bit on administration and probably actually even more than a fair bit because we had a student enrollment increase in that window of time. So we have more students, but far fewer students per administrator. That's what we're looking at, okay.
Let me discover that once you talked about how.
Yep.
Sally opened up that year and it threw off all of the administrative ratios for, so nutrition, administration.
Sure.
Principals, but didn't necessarily increase the size of the enrollment.
Enrollment, yep, understood.
And then I did want us to look at comparable districts. Decatur's very hard-to-find comparable district. As I mentioned very early on, we are considered a medium-sized school district. Our enrollment, and you'll always see Decatur is in red, other city school systems are in orange. But I pulled all the enrollment for every single school system and you were just rank ordered them. And I said, I'm going to pick the ten above us and the ten below us, so we can kind of see where we compare on certain areas with these other school districts that are like sized as ours. I did go ahead and add Marietta City Schools. We hear a lot that we are comparable to Marietta City Schools, so I wanted to put them on this graph as well. And then I actually went ahead and added Oconee County because Oconee County has the next lowest free and reduced lunch rate at the city schools of Decatur. And they've got just over eight thousand students. So I felt like they could possibly be another comparable school district. For us to look at, where do we range? You can kind of see Decatur's here in the middle, and that shows you we pull some above and some after. But then I want you to see where we fall on the other scales. Every time you look at these graphs, it is rank ordered highest to lowest. So this is free and reduced lunch rate. So you can see that these schools of Decatur is on the far right side of this graph. We have a very low free and reduced lunch rate, under eight, under nine percent. It may be a little bit higher than that, but every other district can say we under-report free and reduced lunch. That's pretty typical. But you can see.
I'm sorry, are, are we the lowest in the whole state?
We are the lowest in the state. The next highest is Oconee County at twelve point eight percent. And then the next highest, and they have about eight thousand students, the next highest is Forsyth County. They're just over, I think, they're around fourteen percent free and reduced lunch, maybe closer to fifteen, but they have fifty thousand students. So I didn't think they were a good comparable district for us. Number of schools, I felt like that was another area that we could look at and where we compare with other medium-sized school districts. And you can see, we're not far off from the center here. We have nine, and that didn't include ECLC because we're only looking at K-12 enrollment. But you can see, there is a range of how school systems have operated with similar enrollment numbers. This is total revenue. You can see, even as a medium-sized school district, we are in the upper quartile for total revenue. And then this is revenue spent per student, and this is from the state website called Georgia Insight. And this is information that will tell us, and this is back, I think this is two thousand and twenty. It's the latest data that I have for all these districts. And you can see, even as a medium-sized school district, we are spending more per student than other districts similar to our size.
Can I ask a quick question here? What I think would be super helpful to see is that revenue spent per FTE broken into instructional-related revenue versus operational-related revenue? So overhead really versus student focus.
So when you say overhead, would you consider overhead?
That's a multi-million dollar question, right? I mean, I can make guesses based on what I see in the charts, but I would really sort of depend on your expertise. So clearly, anything that's in that instructional line is instructional. I think there's probably three or four other things that are in there, you know, teacher training, those all seem to be also related to students or instructional. Something like M and O is clearly operational overhead, and so.
Anything not related to instructional.
Yes, but, but not just limited to that instructional line, right? Because that, we, you recognize that teacher training is obviously.
Like principal.
Well, and we have to keep the lights going.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, that's going to be overhead, though. That's pretty easy. What I could, I'd love to sit down and kind of talk through, but I don't think, you know, if we have something we can look at, I would trust you all's instincts as to what is right better than mine.
So this is the important part for the board. This is where we want to hear from the board and weigh in on what are the priorities and discussions for how we can balance our budget and make sure our revenues and expenditures are a closer match. Before we do that, just want to remind that what drives our spending should be our vision, our mission, our core values and values, our strategic priorities. That is what we guide our work, which is our framework for equitable student outcomes, which relies on our core pillar of advancing racial equity, accelerating student learning, and building and sustaining a positive culture and climate. So through that pillar, as we look at planning the budget forward, the main goal areas would be making sure we continue to have equitable outcomes for students. And the performance objectives that I've identified to strive for going forward would be to increase student achievement and pay the educational debt to our stores of marginalized students, ensuring that we have support of appropriate mental health supports for our students. And the budget priorities would be to increase the number of counselors per student and then increase equity personnel. Another goal area is reward and recognize staff to attract and retain a diverse staff of exceptional quality. The performance objectives for that is making sure we have competitive pay for staff, identify and retain staff of exceptional quality, building capacity in our staff, and making sure we have pipelines for advancement. And we can do that through budget priorities such as competitive compensation and staff development opportunity. And then the other goal priority area would be operational excellence. And in there, we want to make sure that we have, we enhance safety and effective learning environments for our students. We're maximizing the financial stewardship and increasing our operation. Budget priorities there, increasing financial stewardship, and then making sure we are investing in safety and security in our school system.
Dr. Furman, if we could back up specific goals. I went back and reviewed the really good presentation from our October meeting, the accelerating student learning presentation, because I felt like there was a goal. felt like there was a goal in there that I feel like we should keep in the forefront, and that one was related to the board end policy one point two, academic foundation. And that goal was that all students will need are these predicted growth scores, and I feel like that should be one of the goals here.
So to me, that's incorporated in here, because if we are increasing student achievement and paying the educational debt, we're doing that.
Well, maybe those could at least be broken up into like two things, because I feel like they're the same but different. And they do have overlaps, but I feel like if we have increased student achievement, number one, number two, pay the educational debt towards, you know, our marginalized students, and number three, mental health support, because they are, they were three bullet, like, they were separate bullets in that presentation. I think it calls out specifically that part that I thought was really good, but just that all students will need are these predicted growth scores, which means it's like very specific that we're touching every student and raising the bar for every student. And academics really is our, you know, academic achievement is our focus, so I just feel like it should be called out.
Yeah, definitely do that.
What I like, second that, is that if you do break it out, you're going to measure success on those differently, right? So paying the historical debt, I don't, I don't love it buried under student achievement, right? So pulling that out, so we have a set of metrics that we can assign to that, I think just makes it that much more visible as to whether it would be successful.
I agree, because I, I'm still uncertain of what that means, you know, paying the educational debt. So the, you know, having some metrics, that would really help me a lot. Because this, you know, by increasing student achievement, I'm assuming would mean for everyone. And so that would help.
Got you, yes, we can help.
So increase counselors, we've talked about some, and I think we need, very much needed. We're not talking just about mental health counselors, this would be guidance counselors across the board.
And these are just very general priorities that have been identified that line up with our framework for equitable student outcomes and our core beliefs and strategic priorities.
On that thought, on that thread, I think some numbers around the student to counselor ratio over the past five years and projected would be helpful just to see, because our, again, like, our class sizes, as you pointed out earlier, we have a couple of bubbles that now, like, for example, our sophomore class and our freshman class are around four fifty, I think, and the last couple of graduating classes have been around three hundred. So just making sure that we are keeping that ratio consistent, so that each and every student gets attention that they need to really use the faculty to the high school, and that we're not overburdening our counselors.
Related, and it's a bigger discussion, but I'm curious, how do we assess the effectiveness of our counselors, you know, the job they're doing, and how they walk in here? It strikes me that there's a huge unevenness in the existing setup. If we say we're doing things, the evidence on the ground might be otherwise. What are we doing to make sure, I've never seen a presentation that says, here's how we determine if our counselors are being effective. And I think it's desperately needed.
Also, what Elizabeth pointed out, we have two different guidance counselors. We have the counselors that are more like the academic coaching counselors, but then thankfully, we also have our wonderful student center, which has the counselors that are more like mental health support and counseling in a more mental health directed way.
Right, and one of the initiatives that Diane Andre has been launching with our counselors is the data-driven, and she presented this last month, I think, at the board meeting, is moving our counselors to this data-driven system where they are collecting data, and that's how we measure our counselor effectiveness. So that is a project that's up and going.
What, what is the typical ratio of that? Like, what does a good school district have as its typical ratio of counselors by type to students, right? I mean, how do we know that we don't have, because you mentioned...
Right. It's just some of these. So some schools may have five hundred kids and maybe they need five counselors. Some schools may have five hundred kids and need one counselor. So there's a lot of factors that could depend on what, how many counselors you may need for a particular student. The American Association of Counselors, they recommend two hundred and fifty students per guidance counselor.
Okay, and where are we?
So some of our schools, like Westchester, Glenwood, we're, we're over that, so we only have, we have less than a hundred and fifty students at those schools, we have one full-time counselor there. So some of them, we're way over that, but at the high school and the middle school, and Fabe and Talley, we're under, we're way over that allotment, so that ratio.
We're, we're not at the ratio that we...
Right, we're like three hundred students or over to a counselor.
Okay.
But like I said, the smaller schools, we're way, we way surpass that, in meaning, like, we're way under.
That's a limitation of the structure of the system, right? But, but, so it's really the middle school and the high school that we're...
I would say Fabe as well.
Oh, Fabe is, sorry, yes.
There's two counselors at Talley, there's one counselor at Fabe right now.
In terms of equity personnel, what types of roles are those in terms of the increase in equity?
So that's something that, I don't want to dig into that just yet. What I want to talk about is talking about balancing, you know, budget revenue, because before we can even talk about implementing of these priorities, we just have, can we even do these? So I think before we do that, we need to identify our, what does our balanced budget look like as a school system? Because we either have to increase revenue or decrease expenditures, and if we want to add counselors, we're going to have to increase revenue and decrease expenditures somewhere else to pay this. So we've got, so before we can talk about these priorities and implementing them, I think we need to go down the avenue of, how do we create a balanced budget? Because right now, we don't have a balanced budget, and we need to...
I would suggest that we assume that we want to do this as a part of a balanced budget and then get strict on what else we have to do.
Right, but before we can do, before I want to pick the apples, I want to make sure we've got a basket to put in. So what I want to remind you of are the major influences for revenue. It's that QBE funding formula, that comes strong to state, that's what we get, that is based off of our student counts, our FTE, our enrollment, and also how we serve our students. So there's a huge formula that goes into, student A may earn two thousand dollars from the state, but student B may earn four thousand dollars from the state, depending on what kind of services they get and the segments that they're served every day. We know that austerity reductions have been in place, we are presenting a budget that will continue to put austerity reduction in place. If it comes out, then we could have a list of things to pay if it's fully austerity reduction, and we can say, okay, we're going to, we're going to get an extra million and a half, here's the three things that we want to implement with that fund. Enrollment is a major influence, like I mentioned, T and E, that's teaching and experience, that is, our teachers that come to us with more years of experience and more, and higher degrees, we actually get more money from the state, but it actually benefits us to hire additional teachers that have more experience and higher degrees. Let's talk about that, that is that slice that comes off the top across the, across our overall budget, the TRS contribution is going up, and then our state's healthcare benefit contributions, we increase, we have additional funding that we spend to, we pay out of our own pocket above what the state pays. So other major reference, revenue influences are level tax revenue, that's our mill rate, local revenue, the taxes that we get from alcohol, from tuition, the federal grants in the East Block, but we know that is very limited in what we can spend money on. Major expenditures, those are our salary and benefits, looking at class sizes and allotments and how we allot teachers, general administration, other staff. We also anticipate some continued COVID cuts, funding our virtual learning program, the TRS contribution increasing, and then what, part of what Laniela shared is that difference between the funding we get from the state versus what we pay our teachers locally. So we need to talk about, how do we balance the budget? So some options, we've got to either decrease expenditures, because we cannot present a budget with a fund balance in the negative. So we've got to talk about, what are some of the options to balance the budget, decrease those expenditures, increasing revenue? So, you know, we can propose an operational, a cost, a cut of ten percent across all operational budgets. There's a limit to that, because we can't decrease our utility payments. Like, we know we're going to have to start paying more for electricity, for natural gas, those are things that are going up. So we can decrease that, that'll save us a ten percent decrease, probably about a million dollars. We can, we can plan reduction in what CSD pays for student testing and athletics. So CSD puts out a lot of money towards paying our students, to paying the bill for athletics. So we pay locally for transportation, we limit the amount of money that we charge our students to participate in athletics to about two hundred and fifty dollars. Other comparable districts are charging over a thousand dollars because they pay for transfers. The student who's participating in the sport pays for that transportation fee with their costs to participate, so that's an option. We also pay for IB testing, that is another large draw on operational costs for us as a school system. We can also just review what other fund, what other things that we are paying out of the general fund that we could cover by East Block. It's mostly going to be curriculum materials, so there's very few that's not capital improvements that can be paid for out of East Block. Also, staff attrition, and looking at, as staff decide not to return, can we not replace them? Not just general administration personnel, but also any classroom teachers, if those are people, particularly if any of the teachers that are leaving us that have been paid out of the CARES fund, if they're not coming back, can we make it without them? But then also options to increase revenue, the major one that we can control as an administration is making sure that we are maximizing our scheduling and FTE funding, so that we are earning more from the state than we would previously. So I'm curious from the board, what are some other things that you want the school system to look at and numbers to pull, so that we can start talking about, how do we balance this budget and make sure that we are continuing to maintain a fund balance between four and fifteen percent?
Well, I think number three, there were some recent balls that changed what we can use East Block to include some internet stuff and some broadband and so on.
Yeah.
The report that I wrote on that, I mean, that can be a pretty substantial increase. We need to obviously look into that.
Right.
Item four, the staff attrition, that's something that we, we have already talked about, and planned for, I think, Laniela had applied from our last budget season south, some of those positions that we added, because we added, I don't remember now, fifty or sixty positions to decrease the class size because we thought that that would help us, that we thought that would be the most effective way for us to help recruit some of the lost learning that we saw from last year, and we planned for and expected to not replace those positions as attrition allowed, you know, allowed us to recruit those, those funds. But what I think we need in terms of data is we need to look at the grade band projections that we have, and we need to look at it by school, and really, grade level by grade level, to see what the class sizes are, and where either attrition would allow us to combine classes and have, you know, still a manageable class size, but it might be reasonable at that point to have a full teacher, depending on student enrollment, and we're also rearranged, like, you know, we just may need to repurpose, sometimes a second grade teacher misses a third grade or vice versa, to allow this attrition to actually work. So it would be interesting to see some numbers around what we think might happen, and whatever they're looking like at schools to see where there may be opportunities to combine classes or, you know, rearrange teachers somehow to be effective in the budget.
Yeah. Go ahead.
This, I mean, this isn't the comprehensive list, right? So I think we should put our heads down and think a lot more. What I'm a little concerned about here is that this is all kind of one-time thing, right? And so when we look at, it's like a one-time hit to the budget, if we do all of this, we're not going to be able to do it again next year and get the same impact. And our student enrollment numbers look like they're going to be dropping, which means our QBE is going to be dropping, which means we're going to have this as a recurring issue over the next several years. So we really need to step back and think strategically over five years, not just how do we close this budget in the next year.
Right. Well, if our, like, the ten percent decrease, that would be, okay, that's a one-time hit, that we could project going forward. Reduction in payments for student testing and athletic fees, that would be something that we could gradually move in over time, if that's something the board is open to discuss. So these are things that, once we put them in place, general fund expenditures that we can move into East Block, that would be something we could put in over the next five years.
Let me, let me ask this, though, there, so the reason why I was asking some of the questions around operating versus instruction were for, for a reason, right? If we look at, we can divide it a couple different ways, but in general, if we look at the things that are not related to students in the budget, right, so M and O and all of the things kind of down at the bottom, central office, everything else, our operating expenses more or less match Marietta City Schools, but they're fifty percent larger than we are, they have three whole schools more than we are. We spend way more per student on operating expenses, not instructional-related operations.
I think there is, so previous budget, the money, the, the way staffing was allocated was incorrect, and we fixed that this year. So when you would look at the state budget and it would say, hey, these are all the salaries in operations, right? They were misallocated, they said they were central office, but they were really transportation, school nutrition. And even though we are a smaller school system, we have to do the same amount of work that they have to do at Marietta City Schools.
So, but you're saying the 2022 budget would have been corrected for that?
Yeah, the, the 2020...
The one that we're in right now?
Yeah.
District's budget is corrected for that, and this is the one that I'm referencing when I say, a system that's fifty percent larger spends the same what we do on an office, even though they have three more schools. And so that's where I'm, I'm saying, I guess the, the reason why I'm asking is that I think we can get, I, I, instead of saying operational costs by ten percent across all budgets, I think we can go into each single budget and make a strategic decision around, maybe this much, maybe this budget is a twenty-five percent hit, maybe this budget is a forty percent hit, maybe this budget, like, maybe we don't reduce anything related to such and such, right? But I, I think that, that, I'm a little bit concerned about what QBE is going to be doing over the next couple of years, and we have to make some cuts, and so I, I think we're going to have to kind of get into the line by line of it to really...
What I also want to remind you is, even if we, the ten, ten million dollars is our operational budget, that's, that's the money we spend out of our eighty-seven million dollars, because eighty-six million dollars, eighty-six percent is, is salaries and benefits. So we can cut, keep cutting out of operations all day long, but we're only ever going to cut ten million dollars.
When I, when I talk about operations, I'm talking about the one reported at the state level, which includes the salaries in the line item, so the functional one does include salaries. And so, yes, I think that has to be on the table, unfortunately.
That's the only way that we're going to get...
Fully understand.
I've heard it, yeah. And if we're losing one hundred and forty-three students, you would think that there could be cuts.
Yes.
And we could also look back at, you know, I think the two slides that says the certified and classified pupils, the classified and people that are certified ratios, they're not as high as they were, I'm looking at the certified, it's ten point two-nine students, where like in eighteen, nineteen, it was eleven point two, so there's maybe some room to get back to slightly higher people to certified ratio, which is still historically quite low, and much lower than other systems, you know, neighboring systems, in addition to the fact that we have a lot of parapros. I was also curious to see if there was some way to also physically apparel cost less for the system than a certified teacher, if there were some way to look at the way we balance that, if we had slightly higher class size and then fewer certified teachers that had slightly leveraged our parapros slightly more, that might be also a more cost-effective way, or if you had classes, you know, I'm not saying specific numbers or specific grade level, but a slightly larger class average, and then more effectively leveraged parapros, that could also be a good way to keep the, you know, overall teacher student ratio down with class, maybe that balance.
So part of what I've already started working on is looking at, is the only way to, really, we're looking at increasing, decreasing staffing, whether we do it through attrition or other methods. So that means increasing class sizes at a certain level, decreasing the number of support staff at the central offices or various positions across the district. So that means other things have to also kind of pause or take a little bit slower, because if there's less boots on the ground, there's less work that's going to be done. So I think so what I've been doing is starting to look at central office, if we do a five percent staffing decrease at central office, that's as many positions, so then we have to look at reallocating that work to other members of the staff. So that's the conversation that we've got to have as a, as a staff, and I've already started tempering the waters. With that, if we look at our class sizes, I've come up with three scenarios for how we can decrease staffing at the school rate... If we look at our class sizes, I've come up with three scenarios for how we can decrease staffing at the school rate, school level, and what that looks like saving per, per grade level, per school. So we have, we are pooling those numbers, but that's before we do into that. If that's the direction the board wants to go, that's the direction that we will go.
Can I ask, it was a couple of slides back, there was a 12,000 some odd number that we paid for health? That is, that's, is that a per teacher or what, where does that number? Per, per, per TE, I mean, sorry.
If you sign up for healthcare benefits, this is what we pay. Now, the state doesn't pay that, we pay on top of that.
What do you like, what is like a competitive comparable system do, for example, right? So like, maybe that that's the number that it has to be because we can't recruit otherwise?
The 940 is the only flexibility. The state requires us to pay the other part. But the board has elected to pay an additional 940 per, including per year.
Got it. So the 12,280 includes that 940, so it would be an 11,400 or something? Okay, so there's a 940 there that we do presumably to recruit and be competitive? Okay. And is that typical of other systems that we're competing with?
I don't know of another district that does it. I can do some research, but I've worked at two other districts.
They did not do.
Other, gosh, I'm going to do my final one. I don't know if you want to work time, but we, we were given a spreadsheet of comparing, because we were looking to see if we were paying our teachers staff competitively. Does anyone else recall them?
Yeah.
And it was interesting because it was looked at salary, but it also looked at other, you know, total compensation. And there were significant things that we did in terms of the retirement contribution. And this is yet another example of that and also credit situation, things like that, that we allowed. That sort of gave an overall total compensation package that was more favorable than maybe just the salary was less. I think a lot of times when we are compared with other districts, people are comparing salary to salary and not necessarily including these other total compensation items that are valuable. The decision of the board could also be to look at that again and decide, you know, based on feedback from teachers, which there actually was a survey, I wonder if we can pick it up. So we had asked teachers too to give us feedback on what do they perceive as most valuable? Would they rather get more salary and less retirement, but it's been less maybe healthcare contribution? Or would they rather have those benefits as well? Because they all go into the total compensation. And if that's what we elect to keep, then I think we really need to make it clear and communicate and emphasize our total compensation package and why that should be what is compared with, you know, other systems that maybe don't provide those benefits. You know, that you can provide a lot.
I think what that survey found is that in some cases, their total compensation might have been more generous. But teachers didn't value it that way competitively. You'd be much better off with.
And it depends on the age range of the state employees. So younger staff don't really care so much about your healthcare benefits. They want more money in their pocket. But the more, the more highly qualified staff do want the benefits. So it is very, it varies based on staff. And we can't say, you're a new teacher, we'll pay you this, but we won't pay you actual benefits. We have to create an equitable package across the board.
And the other thing that came up.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
The other thing that came up in that discussion and that survey feedback was also that communicating that we do have parents, that we do have smaller class sizes, that we do have a full-time nurse in each building, that we do have a full-time librarian in each building. And these are all things that we pay extra for. But this is coming out of the total bucket of this, you know, 86% of our total. And that creates a more enjoyable, favorable, livable work environment for teachers. How is that valuable? Would they rather have a higher salary and not have, you know, like, us fund these other positions?
And when we recruit, that's one of our big selling points.
Right. And so I just think we need to, you know, if, if we are paying for that, we also need to communicate that. That's part of, like, job satisfaction, which salary is the primary, but where do we want to spend the money?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
I was, I was concerned about reducing, increasing class size and reducing the number of teachers and what that would mean in terms of the quality of instruction. I mean, we have phenomenal teachers here, I know you all already know that. And it's, parents add so much, you know, as former special ed teacher, we work very closely with parents. But, I mean, it's just, I'm intrigued by Han's suggestion that we go line item by line item in terms of our operating budget and maybe cut more some places than others. And then on that last slide, you had listed, you know, the testing fees and athletic fees. I know that we've talked about this previously, the last administration. And, you know, I feel like because we live in such a fluid community that, you know, folks who are qualified for free and reduced lunch, you know, they should not have to, to pay the same amount as other folks. And I, I feel like we could save a lot of money if we didn't have to pay, you know, those fees for those families who could certainly afford it.
I, I wouldn't agree with that. I, I'm super uncomfortable about talking about reductions in teaching. It's, it's much more related to kind of the rest of the operating structure.
Yeah, and I'll present that in the next one. And, I mean, at some point, we still have to operate a school district. So, I mean, we have, you can only cut so many people at central office before we have no one to do the work that needs to be done.
I think, so I wanted to, 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 I wanted to circle back on the conversation about salary versus some of the benefits. The one benefit of indexing a little bit more on salary than on health and other benefits is that you have more reasonable growth in what expected salary is versus health is exploding as a general cost. And that is, it's, we're, you know, we're not going to be able to keep up with that. The other point in terms of where we are on, on operating costs, I just, you know, I'm going to sit here and think about it for a minute before I keep talking because I forgot.
On the, on the thing about participation fees, you know, that was one of our early equity-focused positions, which is that the last thing we want to do is move back into a position, participation is limited, but they don't have the funds to participate because it's a barrier, it's an impediment. So we don't want that.
No.
I also fully agree that, that means testing is reasonable. I just hope we don't slide into a place where it's either free and reduced lunch or nothing. I mean, we need to be, in my opinion, we need to make, there's got to be a much wider band. Some of them sound very, and with the, when you do the adjustments, scale it up so that people are at a much higher, higher than free and reduced lunch level, they're still, they're not paying. People would afford it, pay more.
That's why I like a tiered system to be, I should look at some of those per people.
We'll pay 50% of your testing fee or your athletic fee because of X, but the student would get 80% paid.
You can, like, in IV testing and that kind of thing, that's what that would be. Some people just wouldn't take the test, however, this wouldn't happen.
But you also have a large population of people that probably would pay.
Like 90% would pay.
So if they knew for the next year, going into high school, this is what the projections would be for, to be on varsity football, to take your IV test, take your AP, your A push class. If we had that outlined at the beginning of the year, you probably would have a lot of people that can and would pay.
Be happy to.
I think our field trip, I mean, this is something we talk about and we, you know, because it is kind of hard to find exactly where that cutoff is. And there are people who, like, if you, if you make it so that people have to ask for it, there are many people who will be very, or just won't ask. There are still people that need that help or would otherwise not participate. So it's interesting to try to think about how this would happen. But we do do a lot of this already in our school system where we say, this is the concept field trip, pay if you can. And if you can, pay for someone else. And I think that a lot of people do. And not everyone pays, but a lot of people pay. Some people pay more.
I also think, for one, it's worth, I'm leaving the board so you guys can deal with it. But I think you have to put the millage on the table. The question is, how do we balance the budget? Part of the conversation has to be, you know, we've got rooms in the, for the cap, we're at 21. Do we, you know, I think that, you know, we talk about paying debt. I think we have debts to pay from the past two years of, of our, when we saw the large gap in learning that resulted from the pandemic. We did our best, but it didn't work for us. And so turning back now, the heels, what we've just experienced seems wrong to me. And if we need to, to maintain the staffing levels and the level of remediation that's needed and on a short-term basis, I mean, it's got to be done with a long-term projection that says we can come off of this in a couple of years. But to spend a little bit more now to get over that hump, because I think a lot of kids are going to take a lot more remediation.
I, I think everything has, I agree, everything has to be on the table. I do want to make sure that we're clear, we are, in fact, if we hold the millage flat, still increasing taxes by 8%, right? And that is the truth of what we're doing. So we just have to be cognizant that even if we hold the millage flat, that's presuming that we're raising taxes 8%.
So I do want to say. Oh, this is it, we're, oh, we're not.
I thought you told us some more.
No, this is the board discussion, this is the, this is the, yeah, this is the, this is the opportunity. Yeah, no, so y'all looking. So, I mean, we, we can put, but yeah, we've got to balance.
I think it's going to have to be a combination of different things.
Yes, we say, and it's different because this budget is different from our budget. We've never, ever, ever looked at a, at a preliminary budget that was remotely similar to the final budget.
Right, right.
And so as the projections tighten, as the funding comes in, the QBA gets solidified. And it inevitably then rose here, it's dangerous to assume that, but it's always substantially about.
My, yeah, I think I'm less worried about this year. I, I do think we have to make a couple of structural changes for QBE drop. But yeah.
I have some thoughts on how you define operating costs, I know you're.
Yeah, please share.
Because I, I wince when I hear 10% across the board. Because I think in my brain, some of those are necessary and fixed. And some of those are discretionary and would have room as you look at them. And you kept saying power bills. And obviously, if we came in, we're like, well, just cut the lights off. Really what you're saying. But then it's, but then the two things that pop into my mind were Lenita looking and we redid the bond. And saved the district quite a bit of money. That's probably an operational cost, that was a great idea. We've reviewed some contracts for internet or phone providers, et cetera. Those are more functionally. And so as you look at that, not necessarily 10% across the board, but where are some glaring places to look?
Agreed.
Maybe that's the best way to think about how do you, what, what is educational and classroom providing structure? What is operational and then with the one operational, what's necessary, what's discretionary?
That is 100% where looking at more than two years on the budget is critical. That, that is why looking at six to eight years, because you see things jump out and say, well, why, why is that growing by 10% per year? That doesn't, that's not a thing that should grow by 10% per year. And so that's where you go and you start digging what happens. It's generally doable, I think it's, it's, this is here.
Yes, I agree. So to close out, just reminding you of the budget calendar. So we have completed our budget timeline, priorities work session. We've got a good direction of what the board's comfortable with, with priorities, where we can balance revenues, where we can balance expenditures, probably to bring those two closer together. This is December 14th, a reminder that we are going to do a salaries and benefits comparison budget. Also, there will be a mid-year budget adjustment presented to the board at that point. And then in January, we'll do a digger, deeper dive into an even longer range, budget primer. And deeper, deeper dive into some of those more specific for the board and for our public. January 25th is when I will be presenting our initial allotment presentation and enrollment forecast. And that's really when we'll have the meat of the discussion about what does it look like? Class size, staffing, allotment, what could, what could some opportunities for that look like? And central office staffing, so where could there be some staffing attrition that we could hold those, hold those positions instead of replacing staff? Then we get into February and that's when we really start those preliminary budget presentations for review and for input. And then our tentative budget approval is April 12th. May, we do our first budget hearing and approval of the budget. And then in June, May and June, we move into mill rates.
One more comment and request from this ongoing conversation. And that, that is just to say that even though the poll was presented in a separate slide, it's really not been the consent of the board that has been afterthought or optional. Like, of course, it's optional, but it's a strong priority to do that. And I think it'd be interesting to look at historically, when we have done that and when we have not done that. Because to not give a cost of living increase is to give a payment.
Oh, yeah.
And to not give a step increase if someone has worked another year is also very discouraging and not, it's not the norm or what we would anticipate or want to be. So just kind of frame that as a relative priority and also show kind of historical where we've been with that and why, why it's important.
And that's why we included that in this initial presentation.
Yeah, this is great.
I mean, I, I came back to the slide on the priorities for the district because I feel like that's very much a competitive pay metric that we would want to ensure that we hit. And so is it the, I just want to make sure I'm clear when we're going to see. I know Jana asked to make sure that we have clear metrics attached to all of these, particularly what we mean by educational debt, but all of them. Is that going to be what happens on Jana? Metrics are, so we can start making some clear decisions around priority?
So that really needs to be a board work session. So that needs to be part of what the board retreat would be, once the new board is on and we move forward with that. So there's two things kind of happening in parallel. Really finalizing the budget, keeping these priorities as is. And then the board taking time to really dig into what are the outcomes you want to see from these strategic priorities?
What, when is that?
Well, we haven't scheduled it yet. It's coming, it is coming, don't worry. All right, any other questions or comments? I just want to also give Lenita a massive shout out. She did, um, she, I just, you know, been here for four years now and I think this was the rock star presentation on the budget. So really, I appreciate her hard work on this, so good job, Lenita.
Thank you.
All right, so that's it, thank you, everyone.
Take care of everybody. We are, everyone, we turn our board session, work session, 8:45 PM. Thank you, John, everybody.
You're doing the, you're doing the conference.